Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, September 9 at 6:00 PM in the VHS Commons. This meeting of the Vermillion Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Therefore, there is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Call or roll please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innis.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mr. Benson. Here. All members present?
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No citizens of the month yet, huh, Mr. Malier?
Not yet.
Not yet?
We'll be back next month.
Still evaluating?
That's right. It's actually a good time though. The honeymoon period is still very real.
There you go. Okay, item four, do we have a legislative report?
We do not.
Nothing yet?
They're still out until November.
Yeah.
My job's really easy right now.
Item five is our student liaison report.
Mrs. Boone, the BES, will share the amazing benefits of Camp Invention, a supplemental invention education for students K through six.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Hi, so my name is Heidi Boone. I am a teacher at elementary school. In the past two years, I've taken over as the director for Camp Invention, and so I wanted to just kind of take a moment, kind of share a little bit about this program that we're offering here and to kind of let you know about some amazing things that the kids are doing. Sorry, I scratched you through. So Camp Invention is hosted by the National Inventors Hall of Fame, and we here at Vermillion Elementary School have been hosting for eight years. So I want to kind of tell you about how that got started. About nine years ago, while I was teaching, I bumped into a substitute teacher in our building named Nancy Mitchell, who is a retired teacher from Firelands, and she shared with me her love of STEM and all things inventive and creative, and said that she had been hosting a program at Firelands for many years. She invited my kids at that time, my two oldest, which were kindergarten and first grade, to come over and do this program at Firelands. So I took my kids over there, and they were there for a whole week, and every day that when I picked them up, they told me about amazing things that they were building and creating and talking about how fun it was to be an inventor. And from that moment, I knew that I was hooked. And so that next year, Nancy and I worked together to bring that here to Vermillion Elementary School. And so my own boys have been a part of the program as campers, and now they're counselors because most of them have phased off. My oldest is sophomore in high school, and then my middle died as a freshman, so they are now camp counselors. So I want to tell you a little bit about this. When we brought it to Vermillion Elementary School, I was one of the camp instructors and became one of the teachers that was able to implement the modules that were created by the National Inventors Hall of Fame. And in the past two years, I've been the director, but it's a great program, and I want to show you a couple of the things that are happening here. All the pictures that you're going to see are actually students from the elementary. These are all pictures that happened this year as they were building and creating. So Camp Invention is a camp curriculum that is, every year they create new curriculum based on current topics and new ideas and inventions that others have created. So the students are engaged and immersed in new topics each and every year. Right here, we have one of our super fun friends who was creating an LED glow box with all the materials that are provided to the camp. They were able to create and invent, and there are little pieces that they can add to and make it really interactive. So it's really hands-on, and it is recognized all over the world and in all of our 50 states. One of our things that we talk about is that these innovative experiences help to foster critical thinking skills, collaboration, and creativity through authentic STEM experiences. Here's another group of our students right here working on that same module. We have students that are entering kindergarten in the fall, all the way up to sixth grade that can be participants, and then from seven to 12, they're camp counselors. This is an all-inclusive program, so students of all ages can participate. All the materials come to us, and the curriculum is created, and there are online resources for all their teachers to use and to create this and make it very engaging for our students. It's hard to see right here. Here we have some more students as they are working on a game that they have created, kind of like Ski Ball. So each one of the modules are completely different, and a lot of our teachers this year are actually Vermillion Elementary School teachers that help support those students. So we get to make that connection with them, not only during the school year, but also during the summer, too. Okay, so like I said before, there's four different modules each camp, and each one of them have different topics. There's brand new ones that are coming out, and I'm always amazed by the new curriculum that is presented each year. And I even have used previous techniques and strategies that I used as an instructor in my classroom with classroom strategies for my students to develop some fine motor skills, to talk through some problem solving and critical thinking. So not only is it being used during the summertime, but it's also being used within our classroom throughout the school year. Here are some pictures of students that were not only campers at one time, but are also some of our leaders in training from our school districts. They're helping to facilitate learning. They're also helping to guide students when they are frustrated or struggling with some of their ideas that they plan that don't necessarily work out the first time. Many of our campers have been, counselors have been campers at one time also. One of our students this year, he was a senior that just graduated, and we are so sad to see him go. Many of the students just created a really good relationship with them. Not only are they helping within the classroom, but we also have some outdoor time where they're like playing football together and shooting hoops. So building those relationships is really important as part of this program also. So a lot of times, we want to know, like, what do parents have to say? These are actually direct quotes from many of the parents within our camp from this past year, just ranting and raving about the great experience that their kids were given in those areas. A lot of times, we don't, in the classroom, we don't necessarily have that time for the creation, and this program is really helpful and gives them that opportunity. One of the things, too, that I, there's a folder that I gave to each one of you that my contact, John Taylor, helped to create, it has lots of statistics in there. To you, I know a lot about what's going on across the nation with this program, and it's been around for a really long time. Over 2.6 billion students have been reached with this program since 1990, so it's not something that's just brand new. It's something that has lasted quite a bit of time, so the collaboration in the curriculum is really, really valuable. This is brand spanking, though, and I'm really excited to share with you. This is the new program for this summer, and it hasn't really been released yet, so this is kind of like a sneak peek. This new year, we're going to do Discover, and the four modules that are available are super cool. The first one is called In Control, where it's talking about how the students get to create like a road trip. Then once they create the road trip, their starting point and then their destination, they're going to use different types of things, like a GPS, on how to figure to get from one place to the next. And then, of course, there's these curveballs that are going to happen where they have to kind of problem solve over these hurdles within their course. The next one is an illusion workshop, where the kids get to look at different optical illusions and research how that works, and then create their very own optical illusion. The third one is called The Claw Arcade, just like the big claw game, where they're going to build and create using simple machines on how to create their very own claw, that they're going to be entrepreneurs and try to figure out how they can market their claw to other businesses around the area. Now, the last one is called the Penguin Launch. This is where the students are going to be able to look at the geography and the climate of where penguins live, and then they're going to get their very own plush penguin, where they're going to have to build flippers for it to move from one place to the next. And so all of these great new curriculum ideas are going to be launched this summer, and so we're really, really excited to let our students know all about this new program. Now, some of the cool things are, this past year, we had our highest enrollment that we've ever had, 133 campers, and it was so fun to basically see the walls just bursting with summer kids ready to learn and create, so we were so excited. 133 is our highest number, and we're hoping, of course, for more and more and more for So how can we help? How can we make this available to all of our students? Now, our biggest hurdle always is the payment, because it's $275 per camper. And any family sending one kid is tough, but sending multiple kids is really hard. I have three of my own, and that price tag is pretty high for three kids. So one of the things that we have talked a lot about is our fundraising. The super cool thing about our group, last year, they offered a donation match from the National Inventors Hall of Fame, which started, they called Giving Tuesday. So it was the day after Thanksgiving until the end of the school year. Anyone that jumped on our direct site, they matched that donation, and we were so lucky because we had local businesses, community members, even Vermillion staff and PTO that were generously donating to our program, and we were the second highest in the nation with the amount of money that we brought in. So we brought in $7,000, and they matched us with 14. So instead of offering camp at $275 per camper, we were able to offer camp for $100 per camper. So I know that helped us get our enrollment up, and we can only say thank you to everyone who donated to this great program. So I know that that's what we're looking on a lot. This QR code takes us directly to that crowdfunding site where you can make a donation, and I know that we're looking forward to offering this to as many students as we can this summer. And so that's all I have to say, but it's such a wonderful program. I'm really thankful that we are able to offer it here for our students. So thank you, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Are they matching this year also?
They are, they are going to be matching this year, yes. Starting right after Thanksgiving, they'll do the donation. So anyone can make a donation at this time, and that will go towards us, but the doubling effect happens right after Thanksgiving.
Heidi, do you think that's something you could ask the Vermillion Educational Foundation Dinner for that?
I'm so glad you asked that, Sarah.
Because I bet that would be something they could do.
Yes, I actually just submitted that into Mr. Malier's mailbox today and gave that information there. So like I said, any donation is helpful. Whatever is contributed, then we just kind of look to see how we can make this work for everybody, and so any donation is great, so thank you.
The opportunity to donate, does that get out like into the newspapers or the social media and things like that?
Yes, absolutely. We just kind of toss it out there. Every year, too, I also put it, we have a Camp Invention private family group on Facebook that they can see photos, and I always post that out there, too, so that families that have students that went last year can also come back this year, and they tend to share that out with others and family members and relatives that are far away. It's a great thing for parents to use as like, hey, what can I get my kid for Christmas? Or how about their birthday? This is the great gift of experience instead of material things, so this is a really cool thing to make available, so.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I hope sometime you guys ought to visit next year.
Love that.
Because it is truly unbelievable. First of all, your energy and passion and excitement for it is awesome. To, I mean, you know, most teachers at the end of the school year want to go crawl in a cave and be away from people, and you're inviting in 130 kids, and that means their parents, because of the ages that you're dealing with, their parents are going to be highly involved.
Right.
And so for you to have that kind of energy at the end of the school year and your enthusiasm for it, and the engagement of the kids is off the charts. I mean, that is another thing, that most kids at the end of the school year, they would not want to come back into a classroom, and they're there willingly and they're totally engaged, and I think it's just a super cool thing, and I really appreciate you doing it.
Wonderful, yeah. No, I, once we started doing it, I said, if there was ever a tour bus for Camp Invention, I would drive it around the whole world. Something that I just truly believe in, that kids get, don't often get that opportunity, but when they do, it's just amazing to see what they come up with, and I love the gift of failure, right? They try something, it doesn't work, and then they have to try to figure out, why didn't this work, and how can I make that better? And those skills that are being developed are just awesome. So yes, it's a great, great program. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for wearing the grand pooh ball hat.
Oh, yes. Oh, I totally forgot. So yes, they need to be able to create their very own thing, so I thought, in spirit of that, I would create my very own hat for you using the Camp Invention material that we did, so thank you.
All right. Oh, jeez.
I think it's just my height, Justin. I think it's just where I land.
That time of day.
Nope.
Can't escape. Item six, student board member.
Yeah.
We don't have any student board members today, so I saw Nick Freeman over at the soccer field. He's getting ready to play right now.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I was there for the girls' game, so. Item seven is a presentation from Justin Kleinscher, our treasurer.
Thank you. Can he borrow your hat, Heidi?
Nope. Nope. I'm just going to block everybody off. This is just, it's not really the sun.
You're going to lose your eyesight.
Kristen, I expect you to like, you know, pay attention.
That's right. That's right. I'm not blocking that, Justin, just everybody else.
So, you know, to the Vermillion community, we would like to present the fiscal 2025 budget to the General Operating Fund for the Vermillion Local School District, and we invite you to review the document to gain a more thorough understanding of how the district plans to utilize fiscal year 25, as well as how these resources will aid in accomplishing the educational goals of the district. We believe this budget will assist in building a collaborative understanding of our district's financial plan and our internal and external, for our external and internal stakeholders, serving as a vehicle for open dialogue and transparency. If anybody wants a copy of this, please just email me or give me a call. Phone number and email address is on this document. So moving over to the first page here, the above table, it demonstrates what expenditures were forecasted in the May 2024 forecast for fiscal year 25, and it compares it to the fiscal year 25 appropriation that the board approved in August. So in total, the board amended its August appropriations by less than 1/2% compared to its final June appropriations, and similarly, the difference between what the board appropriated in August compared to what was forecasted for the previous fiscal year is just over 1/2%. So what we're saying is that in our May forecast in '24, we were projecting expenses to be $28.5 million in August, when the board approved the final appropriations, or should I say, permanent appropriations for fiscal year 25. Those were appropriated in '28.7. It's a difference of $158,000. What we forecasted in May and even in November '23 are very accurate compared to what the board just appropriated in '25. So the table above breaks down spending into the function level. A function is a broad area of programs and subprograms and activities in which expenditures are classified. The largest increase in spending is estimated to be in regular instruction of students. However, the district is estimating to spend less in fiscal year 25 than it did in fiscal year '23 in following areas, in special education and support services for staff, support administration, fiscal office, and support services in central office. Again, when we say function, what we're talking about is exactly that, the instruction, special instruction, other instruction, Board of Education, transportation, extracurriculars, those are all specific functions and how in the accounting world we classify those. The table above shows where the district allocates its financial resources, from the largest percent of its budget down to the smallest. So as expected, the largest percent of the district's budget goes toward the instruction business. However, interestingly, the second most costly function is the building operations and maintenance. The reason for this is we moved one of 56 schools in Ohio without dedicated funding for building up capital assets. Out of the 611 school districts in Ohio, 518 of them have permanent improvement levy and 432 of them have bond levy. Vermillion has neither and must use the general fund for all of these expenditures. This is why the 2700 function appears so high compared to everything else. The next table breaks down spending into the object level. Object level further identifies expenditures as defined as goods and services for which the school district pays. So what this looks like is exactly what our five-year forecast looks like. It breaks it down into salaries and benefits, our salary wages and benefits, the purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, and other expenditures. This table shows what percentage of the estimated budget is allocated toward specific object goals, again, following with the five-year forecast. You add those two lines up, salaries, wages, and benefits, 74.9% of our budget is used on people. Something else, 5.9% is used to pay off debt and to pay auditor treasure fees. Auditor treasure fees are what we pay the county auditors and our financial auditors to collect taxes for, so we can then audit how we spent that money. Moving on to more specific department budgets, here's the high school budget. Vermillion High School educates students in grades 8 through 12. High School has an enrollment of 668 students, and that is their budget fiscal year 25, and then it also breaks it down into actual spending from fiscal year '24, '22, or '23, Moving on to the middle school, Shelly Middle School educates students in grades 4 through 7. Middle School has an enrollment of 517 students. As you can see, the actual versus the fiscal year 25 budgets. Moving on to elementary school, elementary school educates students in grades 8 through 3, and it also includes preschool. Elementary School has an enrollment of approximately 515 students, and again, their budgets, Grant told us listed there. So again, we went through the buildings, now we're going to a little bit more of a department. This right here is the curriculum. Curriculum and budget represents services and materials to aid in the development of teaching and learning aspects of the district. The district purchases materials, electronic licenses for students for specific courses of study to help students grow and develop. The last three years have averaged $227,182. This year's budget's $24,382. So again, the budgets themselves don't change significantly. They may go up or down a little bit year to year, but again, it's not too far off from the average, plus cost of goods and services have significantly increased the last two to three years. Moving on to the technology side, technology budgets support the needs of the district in terms of hardware and software programs used in our classrooms and the day-to-day operations. The district purchases an Apple device for every student starting at kindergarten through their senior year. Again, to take a three-year average, so fiscal year '22 to '24, our three-year average is $681,761 compared to our fiscal year '25 budget, $679,154. Again, the budgets aren't going to change all that significantly year to year. Look at transportation, you know, what's the cost of running a transportation plant for our school district? In October 2023, we transported on average 758 students per day, and we did it over 1,342 miles per school day using our fleet of 16 buses. The district also transported students to extracurricular events and field trips, totaling 47,467 miles for the year. This year, the board authorized a replacement of one van to one van, one handicap bus and one regular bus. Three-year average, previous three years were $330,495, and this year it's up to $624,573. The difference for that is, is again, buying those two vans, two buses, and that one van. Between those three, that cost is almost $370,000. Moving on to building and grounds, Building and Grounds Department's responsible for keeping up our facilities and doing work for it. Our high school was built in 1968, and our middle school was built in 1976. As a result of these two buildings, have required extensive investment for their upkeep and replacements, and will continue to do so. Right now, we have preliminary costs for the high school roof needs to be replaced within the next four years. Those costs are estimated between $4 and $6 million, and again, that money is going to have to come out of our general fund. Our three-year average for building and grounds is $948,627 compared to our budget this year of $678,000. Special ed is also a big component of the schools. Our special ed department is responsible for students who are on an individual education plan, IUP. Currently, the district has 265 special education students. That's about 16% of our student population. Three-year average in special education's been $705,47 compared to this year's budget Moving on to building utilities, so this isn't really a budget line per se, but this again is just showing the cost to just open the buildings. Table above shows the three main utilities, water, gas, and electric, and the costs associated with each utility, and we broke it down by building. Three-year average, just to keep the lights on, take the gas, and keep the water running, is $600,000. This year, our budget's $670,000. And then lastly, just looking at our historical and estimated revenues, the table above shows our estimated revenue for fiscal year '25 and our actual revenues from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '24. From fiscal year '22, our estimates, our estimated revenue from fiscal year '25, our property taxes have increased 4.7% or 1.2% increase per year. Overall, the largest dollar amount and percentage amount increase was in our public utility. Public utility has increased almost $700,000, so 18.5% since fiscal year '22. Our largest utility company is Vermillion Power LLC, which is a first energy effective company, and it's located just past the Ford plants on Lake River. Our average revenue for the last three years was $24,945,846. Our budget this year is $25,600, so again, $600,000 difference compared to the last three years. And again, this is just an organization that are showing, you know, Board of Education, who reports to the superintendent, who reports to the treasurer, and how our organization broke down. And then lastly, just to show us the highest achievement in open and transparent government issued to us by the Honor of St. Aid's Office, and then also our financial, presented for excellence in financial reporting by the Honor of St. Aid's Office. And that is it, just a quick breakdown of how the district spends its money and some of the issues that we see in the future for lack of funding that's also. So is there any questions? I know I covered a whole lot of information in a quick amount of time, but again, these presentations in your email, you can kind of go back and forth with some of the numbers.
Where can community members find this information?
So I don't have it anywhere on the website just yet. I can place some of the treasurer's website, but again, if you, Sean will overlay this entire presentation over this video. And so at the very beginning here in the last paragraph, that is my email, and that is my phone number. If anybody in the community wishes to add this report, please contact them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Nice job getting those awards, too.
Thank you.
Item eight is public participation on agenda items. We don't have anyone signed up to speak, so we'll move on from that. Item nine is our superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
Yeah, so last month, you remember that Mr. Weaver presented the map data, the fall map data? And Shelley, you asked a question about longitudinal data. Do we track students by cohort from year to year and their improvement, their achievement? And we do, and I just wanted, I asked Wes to share that with you so you could see that. We don't have, we only have a couple of years of data because we just started tracking it, but that, it's a really important thing because it's better than comparing one fifth grade class to another. This is comparing them to themselves as they move along, right?
Yes, and what you've got before you is two sides, one side map and the other. The colored bars represent the percent of students who were at or above grade level one math test, and if you see there, we start with the class of 36, which is this year's first graders, they just took their first math test last year in the spring, or their first spring math test in the spring. And then all the way on to the right, far right, that orange column on the reading side there, class of 2028, that is, that's actually ninth grader. So, what this is going to look like here after year after year after year is those colored bars, they'll eventually be eight of them for each class because they take the math in kindergarten through seventh grade. What we'd like to see, obviously, is for those colored bars to start high and get higher every year. That's, that's the idea. And when you look at reading or look at the math on the other side, you can see that we've got some, some work to do. So, just to take an example on the reading side to help everything that's what the data means. This year's second graders, the class of 2035, were at 65% at or above, percentage of students at or above proficient when they were first grader, or when they were kindergartners. And then that red bar indicates that as first graders, 7% of them were at or above grade level. So, we'll, we'll follow the cohorts through their years, through seventh grade, when they take their last math test, and be able to see whether or not we're making progress with those students, if students need to be growth. And when they do, more of them will be above the proficient level. And so, that's what we would hope and expect to see, so.
And, and the goal is at third grade, we want to get 90% of our third graders reading on grade level at the end of third grade. Why is it 90% and not 100%? Because we factor in 5% of those kids are going to have learning disabilities that are going to keep them maybe from getting there. We're not going to get them there by third grade. That doesn't mean we quit helping them get there, but it's not going to happen by third grade. And then another 5% of them came in so far behind in kindergarten that it's going to be difficult to get them there by third grade. So, we, that, those, that's where you get 90%, but that's the goal. Because if you don't read on grade level at the end of third grade, you have a 74% chance of never reading on grade level. Because we don't teach reading after third grade, right? You read to learn after third grade. So, that's why it's so critically important that we get kids reading on grade level by the end of third grade. And of course, we, we would like to have 90% starting in kindergarten. And sometimes our kindergarten teachers will get them there in the spring. You know, they'll, they'll hit that 90% growth target in, in reading on grade level, but that's the goal. So, when you're looking at this, just think that that's where we're trying to get to.
So, is that, you know, being at or above grade level, is that what you're looking for in growth? Is that what you consider growth, I think, what you're looking for?
Growth is kind of separate measuring. The at or above grade level is just kind of all the kids who took the math test nationwide. They're kind of normed. It's the 50th percentile for second graders who took the math test. And so, this is an achievement level. The growth is the number of them that met their growth target for the year. So, we, you'll be separate from this.
Think about it this way. So, we talked about students that are, that are behind. So, say we have a student that's two years behind. They may hit their growth target because the teacher did a great job of growing them, but they're still not at grade level yet, right? And so, that's why we measure both. Because you can have students on grade level, but you can, and you can have students make significant growth and never get to grade level that year. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's kind of hard to like digest this small sample, right? Because, like, if you look at like the math, all but two grades regressed year over year.
That's true.
And it's weird. I mean, why? You know what I mean? But I don't think you have enough data to really understand why.
That's right.
I agree.
But this will also, you know, when you're dealing with human beings, we won't have a straight line going up, you know? That, that would be beautiful. That would be, that would be working miracles if we could do that. But we can do better at, you know, getting more students hitting our growth target and getting more students on grade level. We, we can do that. And Mr. Weaver's going to talk about some curriculum changes that we're going to be making that's going to help us hopefully do that.
Sure. At the 2021, one of the big, the big pieces, I know that you know we have reading specialists that we employ with small numbers, small groups of students, remediation groups. That's, you know, helping those kids meet their growth and get caught up. That's one piece of the puzzle. But another really big piece of the puzzle is the, what we call tier-one curriculum, the typical, the reading, the everyday reading curriculum that we're using with our kids in K through five and K through seven. It's actually all the way through, but it's, as they discussed, especially important at the, at the elementary school level. And we're going through a process this year, a collaborative process with the teachers, kind of meeting that, a process of them looking at the curriculum that we use, looking at the curriculum that is out there that might be better, that might help our students make that, that growth, and kind of evaluating what's going to work for us. So, we've already, we've already been twice to talk about that. The next phase of that is going to be kind of looking at the criteria for all the curriculum that's out there, like, you know, what, what are, what's going to help us get to where we need to go? And then we're going to go, we're going to go watch teachers teach it. If there's, that curriculum's in use somewhere else, we're going to talk to teachers and we're, we're going to look at math scores from other places, and we're going to kind of measure it, and we're going to narrow it down, and we're going to, we're going to try out some curriculum, and we're going to kind of come to a conclusion about the ELA curriculum that we've applied. Same saying, we have to do this, K through five, and this rarely happens, but they're even providing some funding for that. But we're, we're kind of doing it catchable because we realize that this is something that's come up in this discussion. I don't remember, I think Mr. Habermill mentioned the gaps that we have between grade levels and expectations and things like that. That's part of this discussion, too, and it's already been a great, great discussion. Talking to the middle school teachers and high school teachers about writing expectations, we're, we're kind of continuing the work that we started with curriculum alignment that's going to make sure our kids are ready for that, the next step. That's part of the two. But the ELA curriculum, K through five, is a, is a big deal. It's a, it's probably a quarter million dollar investment over a five or six-year subscription, and it speeds everybody learning to teach a new curriculum in a little bit different way. It's, it's a big deal.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Item 10 is our treasurer's report and/or recommendations.
Thank you. A recommended resolution to the board to approve the financial report for August 2024. That's attachment A. All right. Looking at revenue first and looking at the general fund, through the month of August, we received $9 million in general fund revenue compared to $9 million at this time last year and $8.8 million in fiscal year '23. The district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Looking at food service through the month of August, we've received $18,700 in food service compared to $17,800 last year and $13,423. Food service should continue to collect its historical average revenue. And then looking at all funds through the month of August, we've received $9.3 million in all funds compared to $9.3 million last year and $9.1 in fiscal year '23. For a longer historical average, look at revenue. Over the last eight fiscal years, fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '24, through the month of August, the district averaged $9.2 million. So, again, the district's total revenue really has not changed in almost a decade. Looking on the expenditure side, looking at our general fund through the month of August, we've expended $4.6 million from the general fund compared to $5.1 at this time last year and $5 million in fiscal year '23. The district can expect to spend slightly more this year than it did last year. And below is a breakdown of the individual general fund costs year over year. Spending this year is lower, and it's just due right now, just the timing. It'll catch itself back up here, unfortunately. Moving on to food service through the month of August, we've expended $101,700 in food service compared to $100,000 at this time last year and $93,000 in fiscal year '23. Looking at all funds through the month of August, we've expended $4.9 million from all funds compared to $5.6 million at this time last year and $5.3 in fiscal year '23. And then moving on to cash, through the month of August, district had a total of $20.6 million in cash from the general fund compared to $21.2 at this time last year and $22.7 in fiscal year '23. Food service cash through the month of August, we have a total of $318,000 compared to $333,000 at this time last year and $311,000 in fiscal year '23. And then looking at all cash through the month of August, we have a total of $23.9 million compared to $25.4 million at this time last year and $28.2 million in fiscal year '23. To find out where that $23.955 million is, I was on that, on the next page, cash by fund, there's a breakdown of where all of our cash is by the fund. And then moving on to our investments through the month of August, we've earned a total of $128,773.54 in interest compared to $72,110.87 at this time last year. This is a difference of $56,662.67 or 78.6% more.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. B, recommended resolution to the board to approve the following donations. $700 from Trinity Lutheran Church for school supplies, and they also donated a generous amount of school supplies themselves. $250 to boys' basketball and $600 to girls' basketball from the Vermillion Athletic Booster Club, and $1,050 from Custom Concrete and Designs to athletics.
I'll move.
I'll second. Questions? All donations are greatly appreciated by the district. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. C, recommended resolution to the board to accept the termination of auction agreement and amendment to bid, and that's attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Can you just cover the highlights of why we're doing that?
Yeah. This is really just to clean up a couple of loose ends on the paperwork side from the auction and the bid documents that were put together last time, just so that it'll go through title clean. Title had just a couple of questions, and so rather than try to answer them, it's just easier to, to do this, do this resolution.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. D, recommended resolution to the board to approve the athletic purpose and goals for the 2024-2025 school year.
I'll move. I'll second. Any questions on it? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. And E, recommended resolution to the board to approve the student activities, purpose and goals, and budget for the 2024-2025 school year, and that's attachment D.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any questions there? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item 11 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and the treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting from August 12, 2024. B, approve the following field trips for Sailor Way Middle School. Seventh grade Chicago trip, May 21 through 23, 2025, at a cost of $771 per student, and the sixth grade New Hop Outdoor Classroom, April 9 through 11, 2025, at approximately $215 per student. Item C, approve five preschool scholarships for tuition. D, approve the consulting agreement with Life Out Loud LLC for a combination of learning activities and tasks to access community resources, developing vocational and daily living at a cost of $62 an hour for one-on-one student programming services and transportation services at $70 per day. Item E, approve the 2025-26 and 2026-27 school calendars. Item F, approve the independent contract with Jennifer Goble, speech pathologist, 17 hours per week at $50 per hour for the 2024-25 school year. Item G, approve the school resource officer agreement with the city of Vermillion. Item H, approve the employment action. Resignation Samantha Palacios Intervention Specialist effective September 13, 2024. Item I, approve the 2024-25 additional duty contracts for the following certified staff that are listed on the agenda. Item J, approve the one-year supplemental non-teaching contracts for the 2024-25 school year to the following listed on the agenda. Item K, approve the adjustment to the additional duty contracts for Mike DeGidio and Kelly Pankost, co-national honor society advisors, Level 8 Step 6. Item L, approve the one-year classified contract for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item M, approve the bus driver training at 1550 per hour to those listed on the agenda. Item N, approve the extra time for the following classified staff for training, bus cleaning, driver meetings, kitchen setup at their hourly rate to those listed on the agenda. Item O, approve the additional seven hours of training on 8/15/24 to Matthew Nicoloff and Caitlin Fannin. Item P, approve the project rate of $34 per hour, not to exceed five hours, for the 2023-24 school year for HQSD committee meetings to those listed on the agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item 12, dates and locations for upcoming board meetings. The meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, October 14, 2024, a regular meeting on November 11, 2024, and a regular meeting on December 9, 2024. Item 13, public participation. We have no one signed up to talk, so I'm assuming you're good?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Item 14 is adjournment into executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revise Code, Section 121.22. I hereby move that the board adjourn into executive session to consider the employment of public employees and officials. Evaluation of the superintendent and treasurer.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0, and it is 6:48 PM.
We are out of executive session at 8:27 PM. Last item is a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0, and it is 8:28 PM.
All right. Thank you.